One. All right, welcome everyone, it is September twenty fifth, planning board. We're whenever have to be in minutes. Any modifications, questions, changes? Let's approve the minutes. Kathy, Jenny, all in favor? Great. Uh, we had two work sessions this week, uh, Michael Roberts and Citizens Bank. Moving on the. Or nothing else, that will change. All right, uh, first up, we've got Tracy Road Equipment. At this point.
Yeah, I can run through the the map again.
Any changes or anything?
Because everything remains the same as I was from when I was here the last time.
Anyone have any questions on this one?
No.
All right, I'm gonna put forward the motion then. Uh, motion to approve the plan dated nine four twenty twenty five and the truck movement plan dated eight twenty eight twenty twenty five. The following findings and conditions. This project is exempt from the Anadog County Planning Board referral. This board has reviewed the SEAF of applicant dated August nineteenth twenty twenty five. And finding no significant adverse environmental impacts from the project grants a negative secret declaration for this unlisted action. Conditions of approval, number one. This approval shall be strictly limited to the modifications to the building set forth in the application. No site modifications, improvements, or alterations are authorized or approved at this time. No equipment, number two, no equipment shall be displayed, installed, or otherwise made visible until such time as a site plan has been duly submitted to, reviewed by, and approved by this board. This approval is made with the further condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson. And the applicant requires that all the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance deviation. And to propose changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work. More materials from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to town and the with code section one fifty two dash one twenty two. Going first. I'll second, all in favor? Wonderful.
Thank you.
There you go.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have you done? All right. Next up, we've got Saab. Wonderful, um. Want to kind of just give a quick rundown of any of the updates?
Yeah, of course, so, um, from the last, uh, meeting. We had a couple of different discussion points that we wanted to address. Um, first one was regarding the dumpster location, there was concerns about its location within the front yard. Uh, we discussed with Simon, we kind of mentioned this at the meeting. That we would go this direction, they will be handling our trash removal internally. Uh, within the building with a raw dumpster that's indicated, um, if you go to the next page there. Right here, there's no added saying that that rolling salad dumpster will be within that enclosure, they'll bring it outward. Uh, when the trash pickup comes, and that's a secured area which will give access to the, you know, Syracuse haulers or whoever's doing the traction. So do that, and no roll back and forth. Um, in addition to that, some of the other items, uh, cleaned up some, uh, concerns about the height of some of the planting. So that's been cleaned up, we've also, uh, there's concerns about a conflict between the those light pole that's adjacent to that secure parking area. Uh, we've shifted the painting to make sure there's an adequate ring around that. There's requests for lighting cut sheets, we've included those, the EV charger cut sheets have been included. There was, uh, some additional lighting data on the photometric plan that was requested, that's been been included. Um, there was some concerns about continuity across the, uh, adjacent parcel. And, uh, this parcel in question on the lighting. We submitted a counter response letter. Uh, the gist of that is essentially, we will provide the adjacent property owner with all the cut sheets, all fixture information, all the contact information for the contractor. And the anticipated schedule for the lighting, um, at that, at this point, that's as much as. You know, ownership of this parcel can can provide to them. Uh, our understanding was, they do think that they're going to be coming in for second approval. For improvements on that building at some point, and you know, at that point, we'll, you know, we can update, you know, they can update to the pictures that, um, Saab is updating to. Besides that, there were some smaller items that that Eric and I worked through, just adjusting some curb, uh, how close the curb is to the integrated, uh, gutter at the rear of the property. And, uh, that's pretty much it, so that covers, uh, kind of all the comments we had from the last time. But happy to take any questions or.
Nothing does stand. Appreciate all the updates. Any other questions? For the motion to approve the site plan presented with all the plans. As dated eight twenty eight twenty twenty five, with the following caveats, the cover sheet notes a revision date of nine eleven twenty twenty five. Layout Plan L dash one zero one bears latest revision date of nineteen nineteen twenty twenty five. A lighting plan E dash five oh one bears the revision date of nine twelve twenty twenty five. This board has reviewed the Anadog County Planning Board referral dated September twenty four twenty twenty five, which noted that the project will have no significant adverse intercommunity or countywide implications. Board has reviewed the SEAF of applicant dated eight twenty six twenty twenty five and finding no significant adverse environmental impacts from the project grants a negative secret declaration for this unlisted action. Uh, conditions of approval, uh, all trash, number one, all trash will be handled inside the building, there will be no outside dumpster. This approval is made with the further condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson. And the applicant requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy. Or compliance to be issued, any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or material. Or materials from the site plan documents are not approved. And are subject to further site plan review pursuant to town and the with code section one ninety two dash one twenty two. I will make the motion second, Kathy in the favor. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Must appreciate it.
All right, Verizon rooftop facility.
Evening, folks. I gotta get in the camera here, sorry.
Hi, Jared.
How are you? I hope I didn't create too much alarm when you saw another application from Verizon Wireless.
Free alarms.
When I call, when I called Alana, she, she, uh, she got a little nervous, I think, but you can tell, again, I, 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 I know there's not a lot standing between me and your, uh, departure for home. Verizon Wireless, uh, you, I don't remember which year it was, uh, applied for and got approval to place the microcell, uh, antenna on the top of the existing hotel located at sixty five eighty Waylock. All Verizon wants to do is upgrade the, just like you upgrade your computer or your printer, they want to upgrade the, uh, antenna facility there and replace it with a, with a newer model with better, better performance. As they were going up on the, uh, as they were designing, going up to the site visit to place it. As you'll notice in the photos, uh, that I sent today, and I know Alana said he was, she was, she would be able to put that up, uh, there you go. Sorry, the photos, there you go. That's the existing facility, pretty straightforward, pretty low key, the metal, the metal exhaust fan there that you see. Uh, really does adversely impact the, uh, uh, equipment, because the stuff comes out of the, comes out of the, um, exhaust there and gets on the stuff, and as well as the metal's not good for the RF energy, so they just wanted to meet it about, they, they are proposing when they replace the antenna to move that, uh, antenna on the tripod that you see there about forty, forty feet to the north to get it out of the, uh, to get it, uh, out of the, uh, sort of harms way from the exhaust hood. Uh, that's the, that's why we're moving it, sa- same project, just moving it to the, to the north, just a little bit to get it away from that exhausted. Pretty simple project, uh, is outlined in the code, it's a, it's a, uh, eligible facility request under federal law, so the town's review authority is limited anyway, but uh, based on my experience with you, I, 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 I hope this isn't controversial.
You just go back to the elevations.
It's the code about rails, is that something that it has maintained and it has to have? Safety.
Uh, only if it's within ten feet of the edge.
Yeah, so when they move it forty foot.
It's similar forty foot down the center line.
Right, it didn't. But I don't.
But the elevation go up.
How far away from the edges are you when you place it?
Yeah, look, there's a lot, I, I didn't measure that before, uh.
Existing building.
I don't know if we have tie distances, um.
I can try to measure it on Google Earth.
Can you just show me where it is now with your arrow and then?
It's, it goes north, if you can scroll down just a bit, I, I could blow it up a little bit. You can see where it is here. And then you're going, could you go up just a bit? Yeah, you see there, going up forty four and a half feet, and these are the beams, these are the structural elements. Here are the, of the hotel, so it's really half the hotel, right, it's going right up the center line of the hotel, I, I don't know how wide the roof is, but wide enough for hotel rooms, right?
Yeah. On each side, so, yeah, they.
Yeah. So one other question, in, in the elevation, if you just scroll up just a little bit here.
Yeah.
It looks like there's a, a fence, existing building facade, or something around the array?
Yeah, it was in the image, that's what I was trying to look at.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a, uh, building facade, like if you, if you go back to the photos, but there were plenty of, uh, sorry, we're going back and forth and all around here, if you scroll down, you'll see the, uh, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the, I think, to hide the rooftop units. The HVAC.
Okay.
They suspect.
That roof's about sixty feet wide, Jared.
Okay.
For Google Earth.
So.
Yes, then.
Any questions? Concerns?
I think it's safe to say that that microcell is my, as my father would say, or my grandfather, that's a pimple on an elephant's behind on that building.
Glad this is being recorded. All right. Uh, if you don't have any further updates, I'm, uh.
I, I hope it's not, uh, like I said, I hope it's not controversial.
All right, I'll put forth a motion to approve the site plan dated seven nine twenty twenty five with the following findings and conditions. This modification consists of the replacement of an existing antenna and a minor adjustment to its rooftop location, and therefore qualifies as an eligible facilities request under the applicable FCC guidelines. All right, this project is exempt from the Anadog County Planning Board referral. This board has reviewed the SEAF of applicant dated eight twenty six twenty twenty five and finding no significant adverse environmental impacts from the project grants a negative secret declaration for this unlisted action. This approval is made with the further con- condition that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson. And the applicant requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy applies to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials from the site plan documents not approved and are subject further site plan review pursuant to town and the with code section one ninety two dash one twenty two. I will make the motion second, Jenny, all in favor? Great. Thank you.
Thanks, folks, have a great day.
You too.
Night, I guess I should say.
Yeah. Last up. We got thirty one eighty Erie Boulevard East.
First, we have a couple of friends and associates, thanks for, uh, having us here. All right, so a little background, thirty one eighty is currently, um, an abandoned old Asian restaurant, I believe it's Tokyo Salt. Yep, um, it's a bit of an eyesore, and, um, the site is uh, rises quite a bit from the road and then sort of flattens out to the rear. We have, um, apartments and then businesses to the left and right. The, um, the site is encumbered by a couple of different easements. Um, the existing building is actually currently located, um, directly under a high transmission power line. Um, which is illegal, um, not allowed. Uh, we spoke with National Grid, they would never grant any kind of access or allow that to happen, so um, due to that and due to the condition of the building. Our intent is to knock down the building and provide a new building, the new building would be leased out to two tenants. Both of them restaurant, um, two thousand and two thousand five hundred square footage respectively. Um, we would be providing with that, uh, as much parking as we can within reason, um. What's interesting is the site's paved currently to the gills, so this would actually represent an increase in greenery on the site. Um, we laid out the, the parking in several different ways and determined this appears to be the most effective and also the one that that's gonna work the best in terms of circulation, separation of clients and entrance, entrances, we also, um, look to keep a dumpster in the back. And, um, yeah, I guess the last, the latest hurdle was investigation of the zoning, um, and it appears we're all on board, Pearlana's emailed that this four hundred foot line back here that shows a residential three and a business over here, the, the break is actually right here. Which is a little bit different from the colored zoning map, but I think we put that one to bed today, so the site is currently, uh, Pearlana all business, so we no longer have to deal with that rectangular piece that would splits all the parcel. So it's solid B.
You have two tenants. Both a restaurant.
Yep.
Uh, and again, where does, this is all concept here, I don't know, if you have elevations or anything on the building that we can look at, but.
I might do, they're, they're pretty preliminary though.
Yeah, we'll take a look at those.
Yeah.
Um. Is there any intent, assuming you're? The owner?
Yeah, uh, Grazis is our junior, I can, I'm sure you guys can tell my dad sometime in the last five years of church playing. Sure you don't. Our plan there is to build something that looks like the, um, the building where Tropical Smoothie and Supercuts is similar, similar look. About the same size too, yeah.
With restaurant function, are you gonna have any outdoor seating? I mean, I don't know what your intended tenants are, but.
Neither tenant's really asked for it, so we, we have a, a contingent lease with the two thousand square feet, the twenty five hundred, I've got two LOIs, one's, one's a restaurant, one's not, but we'd like to even group the restaurant concept, because it's a heavier parking requirement, probably a logical use for it, so, but they've none of them asked for an exterior seating.
Because that will impact your, your counts in there, so when we talk, you will need a parking variance.
Yes.
In there, so when we talk about the parking counts, we need to understand what the full use of the site is.
Sure.
If there's any outdoor use, especially with restaurant.
Yeah.
And nothing requested, nothing shown, I wouldn't, I wouldn't comment.
While we're on the variance thing, um, the current building is pretty close to the side yard here. We would be as well, so we would be ten foot two away from the side yard, our estimated building height right now is around fifteen, so that'd be a variance of four foot and change, yeah.
Yeah. So we have a height variance and a parking variance if you're gonna need.
Yeah.
And you only have well spaces that you need, so.
Yeah, or shot slow.
Six is needed, sixty four is provided.
Hmm.
Did you say seventy six are needed? Okay.
Want to pull up the elevations and?
Sure, yeah, I have a flash drive if you want, I think I submitted them though, it should be in there too.
They, they are, and they're actually.
Thanks.
There it's in there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, and these are, these are early, but you get some intent from it.
Definitely. So you're familiar with the multi-tenant sign plan?
Yes.
You know, we'll probably cross that bridge later.
Yeah, um, that's our intent at, at this point, yep.
But, once you get there, just showing the sign band on the elevations. I hope that go a bit smoother.
Now, is the town's current standard that we'd have to get that to approve, will, when we come back and get the signs, I know.
You can come back and get the signs, but since it is multi-tenant, you'll have to come back to the planning board.
Right, okay, so probably should just do it all at one.
Yeah, you can, otherwise, just so you know, don't put any signs on the building in the elevations or anything if you're not doing it.
Right, understood, I think we'll probably go that route, since we're gonna have to go to ZVA, it's gonna have a little bit of time in there, so you might as well just have it out, get the signs.
Your dad might know.
Yeah.
I mean. Something might have sunk in.
So that's facing Erie? Yeah.
Uh, east facade.
Yeah, fifty. That's, that's the short one facing.
Yeah. The south is down the horse smith.
Yes.
You have tenant, left tenant, right, so you're putting it down a long way.
Yeah, I think that wall is actually, you know, it's not perfectly down the middle.
Right.
So you have that by walking through the front, can, can we see the site plan one more time, just? I kind of thought it was gonna be.
I love the.
Yeah.
Parking lot alongside of the building.
Me too, and I thought it would be right and left. Okay.
Yeah, I think the idea here is that the, the signage and kind of the face is here versus it being here, and then you lose a little bit of visibility from, you know, both directions.
Well, you're not allowed to have it on the park and on the side, you'd have to get a variance to have it.
Yeah, I just thought the signage could go on that side, but the, you know, still the way that you would think to split it, I would think the other proportion would be better, but.
Yeah, we've been chewing on that, I mean, I, I drew it one way and then, you know, we chopped it up and definitely played with it a few times.
All brick.
Yeah, I know it's, uh.
I mean, it's early, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, what, uh, what do we have?
I mean, the least reads with the time we have is it'll be similar to Canalway Calvin's Supercuts Tropical Smoothie Building. And I gave them a picture of that, which they were content with, so that's what we intend to put there.
Right. Have you submitted to the DUC for the PJD?
I have. Yeah. That's probably maybe a month's sale now, so.
Okay. Two more months.
Yeah, two more months plus LA soon.
Are they doing any better?
No.
Okay.
We did get our first, our office did get our first informationally mapped wetland site that came back negative, and they didn't take jurisdiction, so it can happen. The rate's like maybe ten or eleven, don't, or whatever, so. It's unlikely that if you have something come up, but I don't think anything actually read on this one, it just said.
Right, I don't.
Informational mapping incomplete, it's just case. Yeah. Submit.
I just wanted to look at now my comments, just.
Oh, I did. Yeah, but they, the street view is before it was all done.
Twenty twenty. Like, how is it possible that Street View, the most recent picture they have of Bridge Street is twenty two?
Stuff right at the corner from like July.
Yeah, it's sometimes, huh?
But not.
Yeah.
Not down.
The car went to Chip away, he's trying to get it.
Let's go in, so they, they Googled.
Uh, anyway.
That's what I was gonna tell you.
That sidewalk currently is continuous through the driveway?
Uh, right here, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, it's, it's down there.
But all the trees are new, like when I, I looked at Tokyo Soul.
I guess this is a little bit of a lie, because I'm showing it as if we're putting those in, but in our work session, we talked about how that's actually pretty darn green, freshly new looking, and that would kind of count for.
There's something fresh and new looking on that site.
Uh, just the greenery. The trees, the tree, that's it, that's, that's literally it, that's where it ends, yeah. For the positive, uh, interpretations.
So I like that Tropical Smoothie building and kind of penetration. Lines, all that stuff, just.
Yeah.
What, what, yeah, what's up there right now is a little bland, but sure you'll dress it up.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we can keep those trees, like they're in such good shape, you're ready.
Yeah, I think, uh, Alana and, uh, Eric were happy with kind of letting those count for the, the street trees, which makes all sense a little, me too. And we'll, uh, we'll make sure we stage outside the drip line and minimize the tax routes to keep retaining those.
There is a park in the long front, right, you're not moving the parking field.
Uh, this right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, oh, you're staying right here versus, yeah, that, that will be probably close to the edge of the drip line. I think the best thing we can do with that is just minimize staging on that and, and really just do the, do the stone base and the pavement kind of at the end.
The current, like, pavement goes right up to the tree.
Yeah.
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 You're hopefully pulling it back a little bit.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's what I was saying, this is actually a net green space at the end of the day, I mean, he's gonna have a long time, whereas the site essentially now is, it's either scrub or pavement, and what scrub used to be pavement is just an overgrown.
Yeah, I think the neighbors would be thrilled that it wasn't what it is right now, my goodness.
Supposed to be Med Man, it was supposed to be this more contemporary looking door lane.
Yeah.
They disappeared fast.
I talked to Matt with Smith probably once a week, spoke, what he'd like to. He always asks me for an update, so he said if there's ever that time for him to come speak in favor of whatever we're trying to do, he will happily be here.
All right, ready?
Yeah.
Ready? Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, so in fact, I think you're headed in a good direction.
Great.
Get the rest of it, we're near there, on any of the requirements, lighting would be a big one, and then line package, if you do that, not, like Jenny said, make sure it's not reflected on drawings. Handle that under a different application. Um, but you're gonna need to get a ZVA application going.
Yeah, I guess.
Whole process.
Quick question then on the roadmap then. Could we go get that ZVA next, or should we submit to county and do full engineer drawings, get the comment letter from you guys and do ZVA at that point? And try to figure out where that ZVA goes in.
Like, what do you mean submit to county?
Uh, like do our full drawing set, and then have you guys submit to SACBA and do all that?
Yeah, yeah, we'll submit it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll submit, we'll be, we'll be lead on it, so, yeah, get the, get those plans together and.
Okay, so you're saying do ZVA after we kind of take this to the next level, I, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, yeah.
Almost in tandem, I guess.
Yeah, it's in tandem, kind of look at the dates, talk to Eric and.
So then, I think the next ZVA deadline is this coming Monday.
Yeah, and that, that's what I was saying, if we can, if we can lock in these distances now with your.
Yeah, you just have to lock it in with your elevation.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
The distances.
We don't, do you have like exact height of the building?
Yeah, and I think. I don't think we can do that.
Could I do it by Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so then we gotta go.
There's a lot of development happening there.
That's all right, yeah.
Once you do lock that stuff down, we meet again, you know, we can, we know that the height's not gonna change, so I have to just write our recommended and.
Yeah, we have to key, like if there's HVAC on top of the building, if it has a fence around it or something to hide the HVAC and they won't have that yet.
Yep.
An architect that wouldn't change from this early on.
I would disagree with you.
And to just make sure we got the right parking variance that we need and everything.
Yeah, 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 oh, it's all good, okay, so, yeah, we'll, we'll take these through to, you know, the purple drawings and then basically, we're gonna do our next meeting with you guys.
So that the next ZVA deadline, submitted deadline is October twenty seventh. Yeah, that, you know, otherwise you're gonna be running around and then maybe resubmitting.
Make him out, make him listen to that.
Yeah, is there a monument on there?
Yep.
Yeah, there isn't currently, you know, I think we're proposing one either.
Because again, it, it wouldn't be able to list the tenants, it would have to be the name of the plaza, yeah.
Yeah, also, there's like, there's really not room, I, I don't know if you're set back here, but you're like, you're right in there, so. All for the best, maybe ten more.
Okay.
All right, any other, no other comments or anything that, we'll just develop it from here, I guess.
Yep.
Awesome, thank you.
Run.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. Any other business? No? Good, all right. Much to close. Kathy, oh, you, Kathy, you almost had it.
I know.
Almost had it.
I've been trying to sneak it in.
Wonderful, thank you.
Do you guys recall when Starbucks came, who the architect was? Do you guys recall when Starbucks came, who the architect was?
Where's the?
Yes.
Yes.